We're excited to have you be a part of this important public process. Tonight, you will have the opportunity to address City Council on both non-agenda and agenda items. The agendas and the speaker request cards are located on the tables outside of council chambers. You must fill out a speaker card in order to address the City Council. Please hand in your completed card to the city clerk before the start of the meeting. If the meeting has already begun, please hand it to any city staff. You may also check the "I do not wish to speak" option on the card. This allows you to still voice your opinion on an item on the record without having to speak. Public comment on a non-agenda item will take place during the citizen comment portion of the evening. These are items that don't appear on tonight's formal agenda. The city clerk will call your name when it's time for you to speak. At that time, please approach the podium and state your name for the record. We ask that you speak clearly into the microphone. You'll have a maximum of three minutes, and there is a timer visible from the podium. When the light changes from green to yellow, your time is coming to an end. When the light turns red, your time is up. Note that you may also choose not to speak if other speakers before you have said what you wanted to say. Shouting, cheering, and loud noises will not be tolerated, and violators may be removed for disrupting the meeting. Goodyear City Council meetings stream live on Facebook and online at goodyearaz.gov. Thank you for your participation in tonight's meeting.
I'd like to call to order the regular meeting on October 5, 2020. Please join Councilmember Kano in the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father God, this meeting falls in the Feast of Tabernacles in the new Hebrew year, 5781, and is one of Your appointed times for celebration and joy. We welcome You into these chambers to dwell with us as we conduct the business of Goodyear. Despite many hardships this year and the uncertainty of what lies ahead, we are thankful Goodyear has been blessed with prosperity and growth. May our hearts turn to those who have been set back financially, physically, and emotionally during the pandemic. We continue to appeal to heaven for a breakthrough. We pray for complete healing for those afflicted, including President Trump, our First Lady, and Arizona State Representative Lorenzo Sierra. Thank you, Lord, for the men and women who are willing to serve and be our protectors in the police, fire, and military. We honor those who serve us now, as well as those who went before to secure our peace and safety, including firefighter Austin Peck, who was recently honored at a nationwide tribute. Keep our protectors safe from all harm, and let joy be their strength, and I pray this in Your name. Amen.
Amen. Everyone is present, and thank you for that very, very special prayer. It's greatly appreciated. Our city clerk will now give information how to participate in tonight's meeting.
While the Goodyear City Council meetings are open to the public, the occupancy has been reduced to implement social distancing. Seating is generally available on a first-come basis, but meeting attendees will be cycled in and out if necessary to allow for speakers to speak on certain agenda items. If you wish to speak during a regular meeting, please complete a speaker's card so that we may ensure that you are in the room for that item. Face masks are required and must be worn when moving throughout the building. Our residents still have several ways to address the council. They may submit their questions and comments to public comments at goodyearaz.gov, and during the meetings, they can view the meeting using Facebook, the link from our agendas using Granicus, and also YouTube. Also, after the meetings are completed, they can be viewed on YouTube. The public may always contact the mayor and council at any time by sending an email to gycouncil@goodyearaz.gov.
Good, thank you. All right, just want to hold. Can you all hear me now? I have a different microphone system. Sorry, they can't hear me. You can hear me. No, I turned my... that speaker down. I have this new speaker here. All right, how's it sound now?
Better.
All right, great, all right. We have one communication item tonight. For this item, I will read the proclamation recognizing the October Domestic Violence Awareness Prologue. Myra Moon from the New Life Center is here with us tonight, and I thank you for being here and thank you for the important work you do with the New Life Center of the community. Why don't you come forward and stand behind there so I can read this to you since I have to stand up here? It's so nice you wore the purple tonight to remind us all the hard work that you do. So Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 20th. Whereas October is recognized nationally as the Domestic Violence Awareness Month, the city of Goodyear wants to demonstrate its support in ending domestic violence and to support the numerous victims who are among us. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month, well, it provides an opportunity to educate the public on the seriousness of domestic violence and the prevalence of this epidemic in our lives. Whereas domestic violence is a pattern of behavior in any intimate relationship whereby one partner seeks to gain or maintain power and control over the other. Abuse includes any behavior that frightens, intimidates, terrorizes, manipulates, hurts, humiliate, blame, injure, or wounds someone. And whereas domestic violence can happen, it can happen to anyone of any race, age, and sexual orientation, religion, and gender. It can happen to couples who are married, living together, or dating. Whereas abusers come from all walks of life and affects people of the social, economic backgrounds and education levels. Abusers are unemployed workers, farmers, computer expert, car salesman, university professors, truck drivers, psychiatrists, teachers, everyone. Therefore, not easy to identify. Whereas everyone has the right to live free from domestic violence, 2018 statistics reveal that 1 in 4 women and 1 in 10 men were victims of contact sexual violence, physical violence, and/or stalking by an intimate partner. Whereas nearly 90% of the children who live in homes, which is there is a doma... excuse me, in which there is domestic violence, will see or hear the abuse. Children as young as toddlers can suffer from the effects of the exposure to abuse. Children exposed to violence and other forms of trauma, well, they may have a permanent alteration in the brain structure, chemistry, and function. Whereas domestic violence is an illegal act in the United States and is considered a crime with serious repercussions. Each and every act of domestic violence needs to be taken seriously. And whereas preventing instances of domestic violence is a concern, and preventing domestic violence is a community responsibility, finding solutions on involvement among people throughout our society, including city officials, residents, schools, and churches. Now therefore be it resolved that I, George Lord, the mayor of the city of Goodyear, Arizona, do proclaim October 2020 Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And I urge all citizens to become more aware of how they can prevent domestic violence by building communities where individuals flourish in a safe and nurturing environment and work together to eliminate domestic violence in our community. Given unto my hand in these free United States and the city of Goodyear on the 5th day of October 2020, to which I have a cause, the seal of the city of Goodyear, to be affixed and have made this proclamation. Can we give a applause for the work you do? It truly is a sacrifice on your part emotionally, psychologically, it has to be, in all that you do. But we're so proud that we have something in our city, right? Yeah, any comments here from the council?
I commented things to you, Mayor, as well as to the council and to Goodyear. Our work right now due to the pandemic is unseen, it's pretty bad right now, and we have to help essential workers, we have COVID on site. Domestic violence, we have seen domestic violence in the last six months, but we have been... we have felt the support from the city of Goodyear. Goodyear PD, all of you have supported us.
That's nice to hear.
Supporting us through these unseen times.
Well, good, well, let me give this proclamation to you, I'll come around the side. There you go. Now is the time, what, any citizen would like to address the City Council on any non-agenda item? In the jurisdiction, we don't have any of that, okay?
No, Mayor.
All right, will the city clerk please read Consent Agenda Items 2 and 4 by title only?
Number 2, Approval of Minutes. Number 3 was removed administratively from the agenda, and number 4, Approve the 2021 Council Meeting Calendar.
Thank you. Does anyone in the council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? All right, I'm going to ask you a favor from now on when I call the motion. So obviously, it's because of my hearing and hearing aids and the idea that I'm looking at this and I don't know who's saying it. Sometimes you say it down and I don't hear it specifically, but I ask you to be very kind to my problem. And so I'm going to look up, and I want you to do something like this so that I can tell. Because it's not good on me to constantly make mistakes and then you consider that... that you're not liking, and I can see by the expressions on your face. So I'm trying to solve that tonight. So can I have a motion a second to approve Item 2 and 4? Let me take that motion.
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilwoman Campbell and a second from Councilwoman Pazillo. Roll call vote, please, thank you very much.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Pazillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
I'd like to remind council to wait till the motion is second before discussion. The first item on business to consider approving a letter of intent to convey the original fire station to the United Goodyear Firefighters. Fire Chief Paul Luizzi presenting, Paul.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we, and when I say "we," it's Sami, Linda Beal, and I, we're going to talk tonight about the presentation of the letter of intent to the old fire station, which is located at Western Ave in Mitchell Road. This is really step 1 of 2 in this process to complete. Sorry about that. This is really step 1 of 2 in the process to complete the transfer. We will come to you in the future with the transfer of the 1948 fire engine to the United Goodyear Firefighter Charities. On, at the May 20th, 2019 council meeting, staff was directed to transfer the former fire station to the United Goodyear Firefighters Charities. So a little historic information about the station. It was built in 1946, just under 1,500 square feet, and not really sure on all the additions that were done. Tried to track some of the dates down, but were unable to locate those. So based on this direction from the May 20th, 2019 meeting, staff was... had drafted a letter of intent between the city of Goodyear and the United Goodyear Firefighter Charities to convey the old fire station. This conveyance will deed restrict the property, which can only be used as a firefighter's museum with minimum operational requirements. The property will be transferred in an "as-is" condition, which releases the city of any ongoing maintenance of the building, which right now is running about $5,000 annually. The deed restriction will terminate after 25 years. The purpose of the museum is to benefit the community and will be free from all Goody... free for all Goodyear residents. Staff will also have the ability to remove the time capsule from the site when it's deemed appropriate. The conveyance agreement will be finalized by staff no later than 12 months from today. So right now, I'm going to turn it over, the presentation over to Sami, and then Linda Beal will come up and address the following areas of their expertise. Sami?
Thank you, Paul. I'm ready for the next slide, please. Mayor and council, we had come to you in February and to mention that these are the two main activities that we need to do to separate the two buildings. Right now, they are pretty connected. So one part is separate the electrical, so separate service entrance section for each building. That is one piece of the puzzle. The other one is to demolish the patio, which is too close to the two buildings, and we need a building separation of 10 feet. So we already have the contractors lined up. They already have given us their cost estimate and their schedule, which will take me to the next slide. Our estimated timeline is that if we get the permissions, then we will be able to conduct the patio demolition in November. Also, from November till May of next year, we'll be able to accomplish the separation of electrical services, and just takes time to work with APS, and there are long lead items. That's the reason it'll take this duration. With that done, in June, we'll be able to record the minor land division, and in July, we'll be ready for transferring the former fire station. Next slide, please. So basically, at this point, Linda?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's been a while since I've been here, so it's good to be back. The estimated timeline, which is what I've been asked to present this evening for the sale of the remaining properties beyond that of the old fire station building, is what is lot 1 of the minor land division and was on the previous photo. The first step in the sale of the remaining properties would occur in July and August of 2021, and that would be the appraisal of those buildings so that we have a updated value, as many of you are aware. We had an appraisal done several years ago, but that appraisal would be considered outdated in today's market, so we want to make sure we have a current value. As soon as we have that appraisal wrapped up, we would move forward with a request for offers. That request for offers would be done very similarly to what we had done back for the Western Avenue evidence buildings, for those of you who recall that transaction. We would have a sign posted out front. We will advertise through the commercial version. Most of you are familiar with a multi-listing service, the MLS. With commercial, it's typically done... The more typical version for commercial is CoStar slash LoopNet, and they get that information out to a very... through a very broad number of parties through... If you try to Google, if you do a lot of different things, you're going to come up and you're going to get led back to that information. We'll have flyers drawn up. We will reach out to those parties that we have talked to in the past about these buildings. We'll also reach out to those parties that responded to our last request and any... the neighboring users and anybody who is referred to us in the real estate area. So we'll make sure we get that information out, we'll have a flyer put together. During the months of September through November, like I said, we will be receiving those requests for offers, we'll put a deadline on it. We extended it a little bit further this time because we wanted to make sure that people had more than enough time to do their due diligence. Because again, the buildings will be sold as-is, so we want to make sure they have plenty of time to go out and do their due diligence as well as to prepare their offers to the city so that we have an excellent, hopefully, grouping of offers to look at and evaluate once we have an opportunity. And we will list it based on that appraisal, I don't think I mentioned that, so that's an important... Because I... the hope is that there would be no reason that we would ever look at... I mean, the hope is that we would list it for the appraisal amount and that offers would come in over and above that amount. So we want to make sure we have that plenty of time to look at those and evaluate them. Once the staff has the opportunity to evaluate those offers, then we would bring that back to you with a recommendation and hopefully, again, like I said, an amount that's either at or above appraisal.
Are we ready? Chief, are you going to speak some more?
Yeah, that's the end of our presentation, so we're available for any questions you may have.
Great. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right. Then will the city clerk please read Resolution Number 2020-2037 by title only, please?
Adopt Resolution Number 2020-2037, approving a letter of intent setting forth the terms for the conveyance of the original fire station property to the United Goodyear Firefighters Charities, authorizing and directing the preparation and execution of conveyance agreement consistent with the terms of the letter of intent approved herein, providing authorization and direction for future actions and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Can I have a motion a second to approve the Resolution Number 2020-2037? Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Stip and a second from Councilwoman Hammond. All right, open for council discussion. Yes, Councilman?
Thank you.
Campbell?
I'm excited about giving it to the charities, but I am concerned that we are going to... The deed restriction will be removed after 25 years. This is the only property in Goodyear that we're saving. And it's a historic building, according to Three Rivers Historical Society, that the two bays and the town hall were opened in 1948, which makes it 72 years old. I do know that after 25 years, it doesn't have to be a historic building anymore, and it doesn't have to be a museum, it doesn't have to be open to the public. And I'm really concerned that if we really are going to preserve this building, it needs to either be 40 or 50 years or 99. We're giving it away for a dollar, and I know they're going to have to do a lot of work on it, and I get that. But this, if we're really going to save it, we need to save it. I hate to speak for councils 25 years down the road. I've lived in this city 22 years, and it's gone by like a blink of an eye. So 25 years of saving this building is going to go by very quickly, and if they decide not to have a museum anymore, then it's not going to be open to the public and it's not going to be a historic building for us. So I think we really need to think about this because we're setting a precedent of giving away a city building, and we want it preserved, because that's why we're giving it away to begin with. And I do know that when the fire department started, none of the firefighters lived in that building because they were all volunteers. And it was quite a long time until we were able to give them adequate quarters. So this building has a lot of history, and it's a beautiful building. I did a walkthrough last week or week before, I can't remember, because I had forgotten what all it was like. And I questioned why it would take six months to divide the electrical. And I thought that was a very valid question, but after looking at all the wires and the lines, I can see that it was... that's why it's going to take so long to do that. Because I was hoping that it would be easier for us to transfer it to the charities quickly. So Linda, my question to you, and I'm sorry, I didn't realize you were going to be back for today, or I would have called you on the phone and not taken up council's time tonight. What was the appraisal of all of the buildings? Was it 56... 526,000 or 59,000, or what was it? And when was it done?
Let me see if I have the date. The appraisal was completed in February of 2018.
2018, okay.
Right. The value of... I have the values separated. The value for the police office, the two buildings that are being sold separately is $426,595.
But that wasn't the figure you gave to council because you didn't have them separated when you gave it to us in 2018. What was the total then?
I just have to add these two numbers.
Well, then let me know tomorrow if you don't mind.
Okay, I can do that. I have the two separated numbers, and they were based on the square foot feet, so it'd be very close, but we...
I figured you had done them separately because you... they mentioned 96,000 that we're going to convey, so we're assuming that that building is worth 96,000.
Right. The value of the communication building was 96,395, and then the value of the police offices. So we have it, but I just can't write it really fast in my head.
So in your recollection, have we ever given a building away as a city? And have we ever saved another building? Because we don't have very many buildings to even try to save.
No, I mean, we really, we really don't. So this would be the first one that we have provided for a public service of this type, so...
Well, I'm excited about it, and I know eight hours a month isn't very much because there's 730 hours in a month, but just having the ability for our residents to go and look at what it was, I think is going to add so much to the character of that building and the appreciation of how far we've come in our fire department. So I think it's a great idea, but I really would like to see us... I really would like us to preserve it longer than 25 years. And I understand we proposed 50 to them, and the charities wanted 25, and I understand that. But I just want to make sure if the charities quit working or quit being a charity, that that building reverts back to the city and that we really think about trying to preserve it longer than 25 years. That's just my thought. I'm going to vote in favor of it, whatever we decide to do, but once we give a building away, and it's a historical building, you will never get it back. You cannot bring back what you've let go like that, so... Just, I'm just saying.
Thank you for your comments. Councilman Kano?
With so much growth and focus on the new things here in Goodyear, it's really a great opportunity to save a treasure like the original fire station and to capture that history. And I appreciate the firefighters for having the vision for it, as well as the wherewithal to go ahead and make something happen. I think, you know, these terms are what they've agreed upon, and if it's acceptable to them, it's my understanding then, should something change, it would revert back to the city, where we're not selling it per se, right, a long-term lease. And I think it's a great opportunity, and I hope they're very successful.
Anyone else? Yes, Councilwoman Lortano?
I... I'm excited about the fire station to get some history and save some history. I understand Councilmembers Campbell's concern, and it sounds like that's what was negotiated back and forth, was the 25 years. That's what everyone agreed on. So after the 25-year period, if... what happens at that point?
Essentially, it turns over to the Firefighter Charities, and so they can, you know, use the building however they want.
Are there any other restrictions, like I don't think they would, but just level it for a parking lot or anything along those lines?
I don't believe anything else is contemplated in there.
Oh, sorry, what's it say?
Councilwoman Hammond? Did you have something?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I'm looking at the staff analysis here. It talks about property cannot be mortgaged or leaned without the city's written consent, so it can't be just sold to anybody or leased out.
But that's just during the 25 years.
Yeah, after the 25 years, it's free and clear, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what I'm concerned with.
Okay, yeah.
So I think she's concerned that it's, you know...
After the 25th?
Yeah, and I don't know if there's a way we can put any protections for the city after that, you know? Because I understand you also don't want to be... stay responsible for 99 years because that's obviously... that's kind of a negotiated point, so maybe we could look at that for other protections, maybe with regard to... If they don't want it after 25 years, would it revert back rather than being sold? Like we get first right of refusal for a dollar or something along those lines. And then my other question is actually to the other properties, because this is going to be up as a museum, and it's going to be a place that, you know, people can come, residents can come, and it's probably going to be very, very nice and very interesting. My concern is that the other buildings, is there anything when we sell those, we can put any restrictions on those so those aren't leveled as a parking lot? Or just so it's a conforming use and it's nice so that we're not having this really great museum, and then somebody buys it and does something really... I don't know, a vape store or something right next door, or something we don't want to be next to this. Or can we put any restrictions when we do sell it?
Well, typically, we try not to put use restrictions on it. We can do so, but understand that the use restrictions that we place on the property will impact the value of the property and what we're likely to receive in compensation. But also understand that this property is zoned for the Western Avenue PAD, which we have in the past done some presentations on that with regard to the uses that are allowable, and there are a number of uses that are restricted as well as per the Western Avenue PAD. There are uses that are allowable uses versus not allowable uses. So it is our hope that is, as in other areas of the city, that that zoning was well thought through, and I know it was something that the city spent a lot of time on when they did it, so that we did want to make sure that this area maintained a certain flair as the Western Avenue area. So I would hope, my hope is that that would be, that the zoning would accomplish what it is that you're, that we're wanting, but understand it, it is possible to put use restrictions on it. It's just not, it does, it does sometimes impact value, and it would possibly impact how many folks we had come forward to look at, look at the property for their future uses.
Well, my understanding, the property wasn't extremely valuable at this point anyway, so I don't know if it's really going to. I would just like to make sure, I don't know if we have a historic designation or something along those lines. I just don't want to see this great museum and then somebody buys it and just doesn't. I want whatever's next to that museum to be done as nicely, whether there's a historical designation or something. I guess, that's just my thoughts, you know, I don't know if anyone agrees with me or not, but I would like to see if that corner's going to be historical. We don't have, you know, the 7-Eleven right next to this great museum. So I'd like to see something so that, you know, it looks all consistent, so.
Next? Vice Mayor Steph?
I just have a question based on that. None of that affects this deal tonight, right?
None of, so just clarification.
None of, none of the other property that we're talking, the Lot 2 or Lot 1, I don't know how you had them numbered, but what we do there does not affect this deal tonight at all.
No.
So since we're going to continue to talk about this until 2022, I guess we have time to work out what to do with the rest of the property. I mean, I hate to break it down that simply, so I just, I get the sense that there's another discussion coming about what to do with the rest of that property yet again.
Yeah, and I think the totality of the conversation tonight was just to make sure that you understood, we, we understand that there's another piece that has to be dealt with, so we wanted just to make sure we got level set tonight where we're at so we can have those future conversations.
Yeah, I think it'll be, it'll be very complicated as we move forward with what we decide to do with the rest of the property, considering that we really wanted to have probably the one and only piece of history that we have left in the city preserved, and whether that's preserved for 25 years or it goes on longer, or, you know, there's a lightning strike in the middle of, you know, next week and the building burns to the ground. I mean, you know, we don't know what's going to happen, so anyway, thanks for your efforts.
Any other comments?
I do have a question, one more question.
Yes, go ahead.
But I just ask a clarification. So after 25 years, if you don't want to do a museum, can you sell it? Are you, do you have the right to sell it, Lynda and Dan?
Ask the attorney on that one.
Somebody? That's what I want to know, is after 25 years, when the deed restrictions are gone, can they sell the property if they want to?
After the 25 years per the terms in the, sorry, my, I'm not used to sitting while I do this. After the 25-year point, the, all reservations and restrictions are removed, so they would have a right to move forward with anything, again, that was allowable under the zoning at that time.
All right, well, I tried to save it.
Yes, sorry, Julie.
Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
If I may, so this, tonight, for consideration is a letter of intent. I do believe a contract would be coming back before council?
No. The intent of this was that as long as we met the conditions within the LOI, that we would be able to move forward with the transaction without coming back to council.
Will we come back to convey the property?
Well, I am going to speak about it before you go away.
Well, yeah. I think they were, maybe I'm confused, but.
You said it the right way, I just, there is another step, but it's not to have a conversation about the building.
And that's the only reason why I brought it up, because if I didn't bring it up tonight, it's a done deal.
Oh, no, I'm with you, first of all.
So.
Why wouldn't we want to keep something like a museum for the fire department with all the advances? How many of you had some grandchild or your child want to go to the fire department? And how many times have they stood by the side of the road when the fireman goes by and they're just, I brought my grandson to the fire station, I brought him, and we were out at Loop one day, and, because that's all he talks about at that age. He was just a toddler, and talking about big fire engine and the noise, and he loved it. They put him in the seat, you would have to think that they gave him a hundred bucks, you know? I just think that this is a beautiful old building. We ought to re-preserve it, and I just don't, it will be a museum. You will see young people come, you will see kindergarten, first grade, second grade. It's a teaching area for them. Talks about safety. There's so much more than that, and we talk about, okay, you know, you talk about the cancer problem that the fire department has. You could have a whole section, you know, just explain the dangers of that and what, I mean, there's so much you could be doing. So I don't know why we're going around and want this and want that. Historical Goodyear has held itself, believe it or not. I can't tell you how many times, you know, it's going downhill, we're going to lose it. And we have businesses coming in there. And I think with a fire station, museum, it will bring something in, and retail that might want to put themselves there, some food, a small snack area, something. I just, I just think we're making too much of this. We can, as a city, afford to let this go for someone to have it for 25 years. I question, why just 25 years? What do they think's going to happen in 25 years? I could tell you, well, you and I could tell them, as old as we are.
25 years.
We still love reminiscing and going back to the places of our childhood and the things that are old, because we're going so quickly in advanced technology. And so what you think that looks to you now is going to be really different look, you know, and we're being, we'll be, talk about it. So I say, do you have an answer? You want me to shut up?
I'm sorry, Mayor, whenever you're finished, I just wanted to speak before you moved on. Go ahead, sorry.
Oh, no, I don't mind you interrupting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What I would say is, this is a letter of intent, so the deal terms that will be presented to council for the formal conveyance in the future will be based upon whatever you approve tonight. So if there are any other conditions or changes, or there's elements of the LOI that you're uncomfortable with, tonight's the opportunity to adjust those, whether it be the deed restriction or future use or right of first refusals.
In my personal opinion.
Otherwise, the negotiated deal is in front of the council this evening, and that's what will, unless it's changed, be brought back when we're ready to convey the building.
My personal opinion is, take the 25 years off of that. If they're going to make it a museum, make it something historical, it's going to draw people, it's going to draw children, and it's in our historical area.
It is, it is, it's wonderful. It's.
Can we add in the right of first refusal or something?
You have to talk about it.
Oh, I'm sorry, can we add in the right of first refusal, so that we would be the first, if they wanted to sell it, we get the first opportunity to buy it at, I don't know what the proper language is, where I go.
I think we should protect it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just want it protected, that's all. I just think it's such a wonderful building, and it's so full of history, and I can see all of the schools bringing their kids on field trips to go through that museum. It's going to be just fabulous, and it's the only museum we have in Goodyear.
No other history.
So it's a lot of history. So that's the only thing, I just think 25 years is not long enough to protect that building.
But what are you thinking? What timeframe? Would you think a 99-year lease, or what would you be thinking now?
You just have to get the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry, would you think a 99-year lease, or what are you thinking?
Well, what do we do usually? It's 90 years, it seems to me, on all the contracts with the universities, what do we?
Madam Mayor, members of council, if we're talking about lease, we're talking about a different structure. This is conveying the property through a special warranty deed with a deed restriction, which restricts the future use to a certain use, which, as the LOI's structure this evening, would expire after 25 years, and then the firefighters' charity could do whatever they wanted to with the building, including dispose of it. So a 99-year lease is certainly a different structure of the deal that we probably need to discuss, because that's not what's been negotiated with the firefighters' charity.
Well, do we have protection that it would come back to the city?
Currently, no. Currently, what you have is a two-year provision where they have to open the museum within two years, or the city can take the property back. Or you have a 25-year deed restriction, which means they're going to take ownership of the building, but for the first 25 years, they have to use the building as a museum with other allowable ancillary uses to support the charity. After that 25 years, that deed restriction goes away, and they can do whatever they want to with the building. So that's how the deal is structured right now. If you're, if we're not comfortable with that, then we need to discuss that further.
So how do you limit that last one you just made?
Excuse me, Mayor.
If they can do anything they want with it.
Yeah, after 25 years.
How do we eliminate that?
Well, there's a couple of different ways. You can either look at a long-term lease, and again, these are options, these have not been negotiated with the, with the other party.
Yeah, yeah.
You can do a long-term lease, as Councilwoman Lortano suggested.
Why do I know if I suggested, I think I misspoke. I wasn't sure what timeframe they were talking about from the 25.
Deed restrictions, you can expand that deed restriction however long you want to expand the deed restriction. I wouldn't recommend having a permanent deed restriction because it comes, becomes very difficult looking down into the future, what's an appropriate use for that building. So I think that's the tension point, that you want it for a particular use because the city is providing it at no cost to the charity, but the charity certainly would want some flexibility, you know, 25 years from now, if conditions in the community have changed, to be able to deal with the building. City has a piece of land right now that has a deed restriction for a particular use, but we're no longer contemplating that use. So it's kind of difficult to clear a deed restriction when you're in possession of that, and things do change over the course of time.
Any other comments? Vice Mayor?
Sorry. I, I think we also, sort of play my usual role of devil's advocate, we're also, if this building is so important to us, then why aren't we doing it? If it's so important that we maintain this history, and what, why are we selling it? We're, we're giving it to an organization that is going to take the, take the lead, and they're going to invest in, in cleaning it up and cleaning it out and restoring it to its, to its original piece. So if they're going to go through all that effort, at the end of 25 years, if their desire is to sell it in an attempt to, let's just pretend they're going to recoup the money, there should be some factor in that, and I don't really want to negotiate from the dais, but we have to be sensitive to that as well. If this building is so important to us, then we should be doing it, and we should be taking CIP money, and we should be restoring it ourselves, and then just asking the charity to run it. But it's not that important. We are, we're willing to give it away, and we're willing to let them do it, we're, it's going to, it comes with some pain. And again, not being in the negotiating table, this 25 years, as far as they think they're going to go, do they, would 50 years for a deed restriction be enough? And jeez Louise, 50 years from now, I don't know honestly that that building has the capacity to stand for 50 more years. I just don't think it's structurally sound to make it that much farther. And I haven't, and I haven't been in there in 20 years, but I think we have to look at all of that and take the emotion out of this and start looking at this from, from that kind of perspective. So I don't know where that leaves us, but I think we have to be concerned about the group that is putting the money in to repair the building, they're not just, I mean, they're doing it for their, for their good, for the good of the community, and that's what the charities is all about, but at some point in time, they can't go bankrupt holding it. And I think we have to be sensitive to that, otherwise, we need to take ownership of it, and we need to move this forward as a city project and not as a union project.
Councilman Lortano?
I think the right of first refusal would help that, because then basically, we're saying that if you don't want it, we want it back, or at least we want the opportunity, whatever council's here wants it back.
I agree with you.
To sell. I, I don't really know about the 25 years, what is standard. It does seem a little short to me, but I don't really know what would be standard and maybe, you know, 25 years seems so short, honestly.
The ballpark deal is only 20 years, and we got a 25-year mortgage on it, so is 25 years really that short?
That's not a good example.
But we did it with $108 million facility, we only did a 20-year lease.
Look at the YMCA bill.
Oh.
That's a 99-year.
Right.
So we've done 99-year leases before.
And look how painful that is.
I realize that.
For us and for them.
We didn't save the train station, and we're getting into the wrong discussion here.
Right.
I'm just saying, if you want to save it, I'd like to go more than 25 years. If you don't want to save it after 25 years, then let's just vote on it and move on.
Well, that might also be the protection, if you keep the 25 years in.
Yes.
But you have the right of first refusal.
I think that's great, Charlie.
Then if you want to sell it for something else, we can say, hey, no, we want it back, it means enough for us to use our, whoever, won't be me, but use our money to be the first ones to buy it back at, I guess, appraised cost or whatever, the standard language.
I would like to see the council, 25 years from now, have a choice.
I do, too.
That's what I would like to see.
So if we're able to, to do that to the point of, they want to sell it, I mean, it's not right of first refusal, so whatever that language is, so if they, if they go, look, hey, we've got somebody that'll buy it for $300,000, because it's 25 years from now, the city at the time has a choice to say, well, we, we trump that and we take that.
Or would that be if the deed restriction, if they no longer want, want to run it as a museum?
So legally, how does that work? That, that council gets the first, gets the first chance at it for. It's not unusual, and we actually did build a, I think, a right of first refusal into the ALDI deal. Usually, they're time limited for a certain specific amount of time, and you would, you can build in that if they find a bona fide purchaser for value, then the city would have the right to step in front of that purchaser for a defined period of time. So that is a term you could include, that has not been negotiated with the, with the charities, just understanding that.
Would it be purchasing, or would it be, I might be splitting hairs, or would it be no longer running it as a museum, that you'd want the opportunity to buy it back? Because I think that concern for Wally and the mayor is possibly that if you aren't running it as a museum, that's what you want for the community. I mean, I'm not sure exactly what the proper phrasing is for that, to put that in there.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, we're really getting into some legal advice here. I might suggest that we make a motion to go into executive session to talk about these issues.
Executive session? Oh, okay, that sounds good.
Mayor, I move we go into executive session.
Right now?
Right now.
Right now.
That's what he wanted.
Or we can schedule it for the future and table the item for tonight.
Is anybody second that? I don't think that we got the support from the council.
I, I.
If we need to move, it's all that moving on.
Yeah, that's.
It might be better to table this, because I don't know if we can set up executive session.
Well, I think there's more information or more, I think we're hearing it from the lawyer now in, in little pieces, and then the next time I hear something a little different. I think we need to be just a holdoff.
I think there's a couple of ways to do it, and I think maybe it might be prudent to table tonight's item. We can prepare some legal advice to address some certain contingencies that the council's raised this evening, probably also give us the chance to touch base with the charity, get their feedback on a couple of those contingencies.
So I need a motion to table it?
Yeah. Yeah, just take a motion to table it.
Somebody want to ask that motion for tabling it?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, we table this item.
I'll second.
All right, I heard the vice mayor make the motion, and Councilman Lortano made the second. So roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Steph?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kano?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzello?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Well, thank you, Steph, so much for trying to answer our questions and also our lawyer. It became more of a discussion than we thought, so I appreciate council giving your opinions. All right, we're going to go Item 6 on business. All right, we're going to go Item Six on Business. Consider approving the 2021 Fall and Winter Payment Management Projects. Payment Manager and Coordinator Brian Harville, the city, and the city traffic engineer Hugh Birrock will present.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. I'm Hugh Birrock, City Traffic Engineer, and along with Brian Harville, our Payment Management Coordinator. And tonight, we'll be presenting our fiscal year 2021 Fall/Winter Payment Management Project Presentation. And be happy to answer any questions you may have at the end of the presentation. Give you a short of agenda of what we'll be discussing this evening. First, we'll be discussing our pavement condition results. Next, we'll follow up with our pavement treatments for Fall/Winter of fiscal year 2021. After that, we'll be discussing our treatment locations, and then closing with our recommendation. The table above, in front of you on the slide, is our pavement condition index by roadway classification. The areas highlighted in green are at or above our targeted values, and the areas highlighted in yellow are within five points of our targeted values. And also to illustrate, in the lower right-hand portion of the slide, is our citywide PCI, showing that it has increased from a value of sixty-eight point one in fiscal year 2014 to a value of seventy-eight point four in fiscal year 2020. On this slide, we have the seven-year pavement, network pavement condition index. And what this chart shows is the progress of each fiscal year since the program's inception in fiscal year 2014 to fiscal year 2020. And these scheduled treatments that we're performing as part of this work over the last seven years are to improve the driving service and extend the life of the pavement by seven to ten years, depending on the application. And now I'll hand this presentation off to Brian Harville for discussion of the treatments.
Good evening, council, and mayor and council. This fall, we have two treatments being applied. The first is a high-volume fast with a scrub seal. This is a two-part process, beginning with a scrub seal, followed by a high-volume fast, a fractured aggregate surface treatment. The second treatment is a low-volume cave seal, consisting of a low-volume fast, followed by a type-two slurry seal. The example above is a Palm Valley Phase Three, applied in FY18. We'll be treating two neighborhoods in the northern half of the city. On the left is Canyon Trails Phase One, which will receive a low-volume cave seal. On the right is Rancho Mirage, which is exhibiting poor pavement conditions. This neighborhood will receive a scrub seal in addition to the low-volume cave seal. In the southern half of the city, we'll be applying a low-volume cave seal to the Kernado Village neighborhood. And a high-volume fast preceded by a scrub seal will be applied to the seven miles of Rainbow Valley Road from Riggs Road to Ray Road, excuse me, and on Willis Road from Rainbow Valley Road to Mountain Vista Drive.
Thank you, Brian. Cost summary of what we're presenting this evening, again, these are for fiscal year 2021, our Fall and Winter Pavement Management Projects. First, we have our ADA Ramp Repairs and Replacements in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Next is our crack sealing in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which will cover three collector streets in approximately fifteen subdivisions. Following that, we have our Rainbow Valley Road Surface Preparation in the amount of one hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred dollars. And this is advanced work ahead of the high-volume fast with scrub seal that we discussed earlier. Following that, we have our pavement data inventory in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars. And what this is, is our citywide comprehensive data collection for all city streets. And what this is, it takes place on a six-year cycle, as we're coming up on that first year of six. And following that is our high-volume fast with scrub seal in the amount of seven hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred dollars. And then our low-volume cave seal, the amount of four hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred dollars. Coming to a total for our Fall and Winter projects totaling one million, nine hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred dollars. And what I should clarify is, we'll be coming back about after the first of the year to discuss our Spring projects. The reason why we have to split it up into two separate presentations this year, we have some contracts expiring in November for the work that'll take place in approximately March or April. So we are unable to accurately estimate those projects at this time. So our staff recommendation is to allow expenditure, or approve expenditures, excuse me, in the amount of one million, nine hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred dollars to complete our fiscal year 2021 Fall and Winter Pavement Management Projects in various locations throughout the city. And with that, be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? Can I have a motion and a second to approve the expenditures in the amount one million, nine hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred for 2021 Fall/Winter Payment Management Project? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Keno, and a second from Councilman Stip. Open for council discussion. Councilman Hampton?
Yeah, thank you so much for your presentation. I think this is a vital part of our community. I mean, it's not, we probably don't get too excited about it. I think it's a great, these are great projects, because it really shows, sets the tone for the entire city, the look of it, how it operates. It just makes people who come to the community see that it's a well-run city, and that it's just a basic, basic type of thing that we need for the city. So I appreciate you doing all the work and making sure that we have, doing the right projects at the right time, so we don't have our roads falling apart. I know some people, it's frustrating when they have to move their cars to reset, to get the road created, but I think, at the end of the day, I think everybody loves having a fresh road to drive on. And I know that Rainbow Valley Road, that's very needed out there as well. I've driven on that fairly often, and that'll be very helpful out there as well. So thank you for all the work, and I'm looking forward to next, the Spring version as well. So thank you.
Councilman Pizzillo?
Yeah, I also appreciate all the effort, but I got a question for you. What is the warranty? When they do the neighborhoods, and they put the sealer in, you know, they seal the cracks, and then they turn around and do the overlay or whatever. What's the warranty work on that?
Generally, we get a one-year warranty on the surface. We do expect the cracks to come through, and I am familiar with your neighborhood, so I do know that we're seeing some cracks coming back. That is on the list for next year for a crack seal as a treatment.
The only reason why I ask is the neighborhood west of Litchfield Road on Palm Valley Boulevard, south of Palm Valley, that neighborhood in there called Trevesia. The same cracks that they sealed are all back open again.
Unfortunately, the surface that we put on top of that isn't as flexible as the crack seal underneath. So what happens is, as the temperature warms up, the cracks tend to widen, and as it cools, or, I'm sorry. As the temperature warms up, the cracks tend to shrink, and as it cools down, the cracks widen. And so while the crack seal is moving, that surface is not, and it gives into cracks.
Yeah, and again, I'm not sure the mechanics of how all that works. Alls I know is, first thing they did before they ever put the overlay on is, they filled, put some kind of solution, or tarish, or whatever it was, to fill the cracks. And some of them were, you know, a pretty good, pretty good gap. And then they went ahead and put the overlay on there, but for some reason, whatever they put in there just either sunk, or got absorbed, or what, it just still spread. So that's why I was kind of curious what the warranty is on that, because I've seen some neighborhoods where they've done it, where it still looks nice and clean, just where they overlaid it and filled the cracks, and I've seen others where they just don't take. So that's why I was kind of curious on that, because they came back almost like they were before they sealed it. So, yeah, if there's anything you guys can do on those when they come back like that, because, and again, it's probably been two years, but it didn't take that long for them to actually come back, you know, in there. I mean, the road looks good, the color's good, but it still has that separation in the cracks itself, so, just a thought. But I appreciate the program, because you're saving our streets and roads by doing this. And unfortunately, I know down the road, sometimes they're going to have to figure out how to deal with the gasoline tax, because if they don't figure out how to fund these roads, and you have to actually rip them all up, it's a lot more expensive than the process that you're doing to preserve these roads and do the maintenance on it. So I appreciate the effort and how you measure the ones that need to get done, so, and thank you for that.
Councilman Campbell?
Thank you for bringing this forward. I think it would be of interest to council if we knew what neighborhood you're actually going to touch, so that when we see our constituents, we can say they're going to hit your neighborhood this year, or whatever. That would be great. Our city prides ourselves on our streets, that we have no potholes, and that's why Goodyear's such a great place to live, because we've got great streets, and thank you for being so diligent with them.
Any other comment? All right, then, because the discussion is finished. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, gentlemen. The last item in the business is consider referring the charter amendment to the voters and the call of election. Our city manager, Julia Arundel, will be presenting. Julie?
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. So, as you mentioned, tonight, I'm here to give an update on our charter project and ask your consideration for a call for special election. So as you know, the city charter is essentially the city constitution. And our city charter was adopted in nineteen eighty-seven, and it's been amended several times, most recently in 2019 for consolidated elections. However, the last comprehensive review of our city charter was last done in 2004. So this last January, the city council appointed a charter review committee to conduct a comprehensive review of Goodyear's city charter. We had a great group on our charter committee. They spent a lot of time diligently going through all of the articles, and they brought forth their recommendations to city council on September fourteenth this year. So tonight, I'd like to give an update on where we are with the project, and review the ballot language, timeline for a special election, and our public outreach. So I'm not going to go back through all of the work that was conducted at the study session, other than to say that the suggestions, recommendations from the charter committee consisted of a number of major changes, but also some minor and administrative changes. From the work session, there were two specific items that council had consensus, and staff has redrawn up the language to reflect council's desire for consistency and stability to replace any vacancy in the mayor from the existing city council. And then the other change that we've updated the language on was to remove any mention of districting within the city charter, instead allowing the charter committee, that would be reappointed every ten years, to make that deliberation and consideration as they move into the future. So when we embarked on this project, and honestly, throughout the project, we originally thought that it made sense to ask the voters a single question, which would be to adopt an amended and restated charter. However, as our attorney and city clerk were going through the research to actually write the ballot question, we believe it is prudent to actually refer ten questions to the voters. And there's a number of reasons, and if council would like to get into that, I can have, you know, provide some information. But essentially, there's some rules about bringing more than a single item in one ballot question. So what we are asking council to consider in the call for election is to have each individual article that has major changes to be considered by voters independently. So Articles two through four, six through nine, eleven and thirteen, would each have a question asking the voters to adopt that updated article or to not accept that updated article. And then one final question, which covers Articles one and fifteen, as those were only administrative and grammatical in nature. So if council were to consider doing a call for election this evening, the next step would be for us to publish in the Arizona Republic on October twenty-first and thirtieth a call for public arguments for and against those ten ballot questions. Those arguments for and against would be due to the city clerk's office no later than December ninth. And I do want to note that there is a fifty-dollar fee for submitting an argument for or against, and there's a three-hundred-word maximum limit. Then moving into 2021, the last day to register to vote for the special election would be on February eighth. The ballots would be distributed on February tenth, and an all-mail-in ballot election would take place on March ninth. We do partner with Maricopa County to conduct our elections, and they charge us two dollars and twelve cents per voter. And as of September sixteenth, we had just over fifty-three thousand voters. I do believe that those numbers will be updated this week, as today was the last day to register to vote. But at that number, fifty-three thousand voters, the election would cost approximately a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, which has been budgeted. In addition, we had a supplemental that council approved that allowed us to use a facilitator during the committee process, and contained dollars allocated for a public education and outreach program. And so using internal staff consisting of our city clerk, Darcy McCracken, and Jenna Goad, they would lead up the public outreach campaign that would begin effective with the call to election. And essentially, it's an education plan with a goal to ensure voters know of the election and know the questions that would be on the ballot. We would have a dedicated webpage. We would utilize and focus social media, any different city events that we have, Good Neighbor alerts, and have a speakers bureau. So if there's a homeowners association, or hopefully, we're back in a world where there's meetings and gatherings, that we would have knowledgeable staff able to come and present information, again, to educate that there's an election and what questions would be on the ballot. So with that, I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Will the city clerk please read Resolution Number 2020-2106 by title only, please?
Adopt Resolution Number 2020-2106 ordering questions we submitted to the qualified electors of the city of Goodyear with respect to amendments to the Goodyear city charter. Said questions to be submitted at a city's special election to be held on March ninth, 2021, and providing direction and authorization related to such special election.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 2020-2106? Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Campbell, and a second from Councilman Hampton. Open for council discussion. All right, Councilman Pizzillo?
Want a comment, want a question? The comment is, I, you know, I've gone back and forth in my mind on putting one question on there. I personally like the fact it's being broken out, because I'm always a little leery of everything being lumped in one, because if there was just one piece in there that something didn't like, you'd kill the whole thing. So I appreciate it breaking into nine questions, even though I know the ballot, but that'll probably be the only thing that goes out to them, so it's not like a whole lot of things they've got to go through. So I think that's the smart move, and I'm glad it's legally the way it has to be. The other thing deals with the for and against. Who does that? The for against, you know, the questions, and who writes that stuff?
Senator Darcy, would like to answer then?
Mayor and councilmember Pizzillo, those are actually interested citizens. It could be political parties, but typically, over the last several years, the city has not received any. It is possible also for members of the committee, they could actually submit one, or council themselves could also submit them on their own.
Is the city allowed to at least explain what they are? No.
The city would not submit an argument for or against, but however, with the drafting of the ballot language, that's the information that contains what the residents would be voting on, and then... be voting on, and then mirror that with the education campaign to make sure that there's an awareness brought to the issues. But we're prohibited from arguing for or against.
No, I understand that, but the information, at least they know what it, I mean, are they gonna be able to tell what, what it is that's in the language at all? Or when you're talking about the information program, or is it just gonna be the basic language that they're gonna get in the ballot, and they've gotta decipher what that really means?
You mean to standardize the dialogue they use every year? Is that what you're saying, and not?
Well, I just, I just wanna make sure that at least not you're selecting a for or against, but they, they know what you're voting for.
Right, I, I think that's partially to be handled through the education piece that Darcy's gonna head up. But certainly, as a city, we are prohibited from advocating either for or against an item on the ballot. So we've crafted some language that's in your packet as far as what would be the official language of the ballot that describes the action. But further explanation will be through the public education campaign.
Okay, no, I understand the for or against. I just wanna make sure they at least understand what they're voting for. That's why I was going back and forth with one, one question versus, looks like 10 questions, because, you know, sometimes just lack of confusion, the way these things are worded, you think you're going in one direction, in reality, you're going in another direction, you know, when you vote. I just wanna make sure they know what they're voting for, that's all.
Well, didn't we do that when we changed the election date? We put information out there that directed, you know, kinda told the complete story so that, because we want them to vote a certain way. So I'm sure we can handle it the same way, I'm assuming. Councilman Kano? I thought I saw your hand up there.
I was just wondering, on the various sections that's gonna be separated out, is there anything that would cause a conflict if one part got approved and another part didn't? Are they kinda standalone sections, or is it gonna create a conundrum?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I think there's actually only one, because it has to do with the electoral districts. Most of that language is in, and I don't have the articles here in front of me, I think it's Article 3 or Article 4. There is a reference later in the charter about electoral districts. So if they were to pass one section, not the other one, it's really not a huge impact, but that's really the only two crossovers that I could find.
Any other questions? All right, let's phone out. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kano?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Lauratano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right, we're coming to the end of the meeting. So does council have any comments, commendation reports you wanna talk about? Councilman Hampton?
I think I might have brought this up before. I just wanted to tell the Streets Department, thank you for completing, they're starting to work their way down with the new, the street signs, making them, replacing them. And it looks really good in most of the neighborhoods they've already been replaced in, so I appreciate that, so.
Anyone else?
It helps people be able to take pride in their community when the street signs are legible, so, thank you.
Anyone else? All right. City manager, do you have anything you wanna give us?
Mayor, I do not.
No? Okay. The next meeting's gonna be a work session, October 19, 2020, at 6:00 PM. No further business. Discuss, this meeting is adjourned.